I'd like to call the November 2nd, 2017, Middletown Board of Education to order. Mrs. Blumenau, will you please lead us in the flight salute? And please remain standing for a moment of silence.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which we stand in, and to the one that we worship, with all our heart and soul.
Thank you, Ms. Blumenau. The first moment of silence this evening is for Mr. Tom Beato. Tom and his wife Brenda taught for many, many years in our middle schools. Tom started at Twin Towers, and then when the schools changed, he went to Monhegan. You know, when I think of Tom, and I did work with Tom, I think of dedication and commitment. Tom would stay long hours after school dismissed to help any students. He coached in our district, and at that time, coaches were paid very little as today. You could always count on Tom to be there, whether to chaperone a dance, to help with a sporting event, to be on any committee. The staff looked up to Tom, and the students looked up to Tom. He was a wonderful human being. So please remember Tom Beato and your thoughts and prayers. And I would be very remiss if I did not mention the individuals who lost their lives and were seriously wounded in the terrorist attack in New York City. So again, please remember these individuals. Thank you so much. Mr. See, could you read the mission statement?
The mission of the enlarged city school district of Middletown: We strive to provide fiscally sound educational opportunities in a safe environment that continuously supports our diverse student population. We will enable all students to graduate, to reach their full potential, and to become lifelong learners, and to be competitive, productive members of society.
Thank you, Mr. Crescendo. Mrs. Clark, could you please call the roll?
Mrs. Blumenau? Here. Mr. Gomez? Here. Mrs. Knapp? Here. Mr. Perrino? Here. Ms. Tobiasin? Here. Ask Williams? Here. Mrs. Suck? Here.
Before we go on to approval of the agenda, as you notice, the superintendent, Dr. Eastwood, the assistant superintendent, Mr. Delmorel, our financial individual, Mike Tuttle, they're not here this evening. They're on a conference. So we have Karen Marconi, who is acting as interim superintendent for this week, and she's at the board meeting this evening. So welcome, Karen.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Passes unanimously. Approval of special minutes, October 26, 2017, special meeting?
John, it's October 19.
I'm sorry?
October 19.
He can do the others.
When was that meeting, Taryn?
October 18 and October 26.
Okay, October 19 and 26. Thank you. Motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Both meetings, right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. I will go on to recognitions, announcements, and community reports. And before we get to the recognitions this evening, we have a wonderful recognition, members of our art department. Bishop Williams and I have a letter that we are going to read. Bishop, do you want to start?
This letter is dated October 26, 2017, to the Enlarged City School District Middletown Board of Education. It is with both sadness and excitement that I submit this letter of retirement from the Enlarged City School District of Middletown. My separation from the district will be effective February 1, 2018, following my last day of work on January 31, 2018. This letter complies with all contractual requirements regarding my retirement, separation from the district. Missing my wife tremendously and contemplating the soon-to-be birth of three new grandchildren, bringing the total to five, all aged three and younger, I find that my family obligations need to be my number-one priority. Reflecting on my 13.5 years at Middletown, I believe that I have fulfilled the promise that I majored the school district back in July of 2004, when the board directed me to help the district move past the tribulations of the previous administrations and others. My personal goal was not just to get past those tribulations of 2003, 2004, but to make this district great again and assure that all students, regardless of race and/or economic situations, have access to and leverage the best educational opportunities possible. Over the last 13.5 years, we have been able to accomplish what most other high-needs minority school districts do not: erase the achievement, gaps between whites and minorities, as well as between students of poverty and those who are not. We have, in essence, eliminated barriers so that all students can excel academically.
Thank you. Thank you, Bishop. Middletown has seen graduation cohort rates climb 38 percentage points from 51% to 89%. Over 60% of the graduates attend college, and over 40% of the graduates with college course credit. District programs become nationally recognized: two-year blended learning, OER, that's Open Educational Resources, music programs, expansion of technology, and our free college tuition program for all students. More than half of our graduates that take college courses during high school come from homes of poverty. The district became a member of the prestigious League of Innovative School Districts. The district became a leader in educational technology innovation. $190 million in capital improvement to our facilities in an attempt to erase the look and feel of poverty, while only increasing the tax levy $10 per average household. In addition, this was all done while holding Middletown's per pupil cost below the state average. Elementary and middle school student proficiency soaring in core subjects. Are students able to say, "We have a future-ready high school," and the Enlarged City School District of Middletown has become recognized as a school district of excellence. It has been a rewarding 13 and 1/2 years, and I have enjoyed working with incredible teachers, insightful administrators, a hard-working support staff, a supportive Board of Education members, and a receptive community that truly prioritizes the education of its children. I will miss you, but as I leave, I can say for me, "Mission accomplished." And so it was. I'm sure, as in this letter, Ken would be the first admitted that he could not have done all this without the great, wonderful staff we have in this district, from the ground floor up. That is a letter that's been posted, and so be it. Now on to other recognitions. We have one of our very supportive and very excellent instructors, Dana Hermes, here tonight. And we're going to recognize some of our art students. Dana, do you want to come up to the mic and give a little explanation, and we can get on to the recognition? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perrino and board members, for having us here this evening. Excuse me. Tonight, we're here to recognize some students that were chosen by their art teachers to participate in the New York State School Board Association exhibition. Teachers were only allowed to choose two students out of all of the students that they teach throughout the year, so it was a very tough decision. Therefore, it was a huge honor for students to participate in this. The exhibition was held in Lake Placid through October 12 through the 14th, and school districts from all over New York State participated in this event. So it was really nice that we were honored to represent Middletown in this exhibition. So tonight, the students will receive a certificate of participation and a sketchbook from the New York State Teachers Association. And I have Ms. Kaylee Ozerchuk that's going to help me pass everything out. And we're going to call the students up, and they're going to have their artwork. So I'm going to call you up. You'll take your certificate, get your sketchbook from Ms. O, and if you could just maybe stand in the front here with your artwork, and Mr. Witt will guide you to your spot. Thank you, Mr. Witt, my lovely assistant. And Joy Lynn? And there's no one else out there that I missed that stepped in on the way out, or on the way in? So there we have their beautiful artwork. Congratulations, everybody. Here, I guess.
The group, and the instructors, and our interim superintendent, and Bishop Williams.
All of them will line up together in pairs if you want to try to figure this out.
Any of the board want to join? That's fine.
Very nice. Is that a self-portrait?
Yeah.
Is that a self-portrait? Very nice.
We'll see you soon, Miss Hermes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I've said before that in middle school, the way we were required to take art and the way I passed the course, I used to help Mrs. Connell, lovely person, clean up the room after everybody left. But again, for that reason, I admire even more the people who have the skills. And thank you, the instructors, for being here tonight. There you go. Hey, I've done worse in my life. Okay, thank you. Now we're going on to board recognitions and announcements and community reports. Let's see, who would like to start? Mrs. Suck, go ahead. You look ready to go.
Hi, everyone. So we do have, coming up this Tuesday, it's fast approaching, the Harlem Wizards game. The doors open at 6 o'clock, and the game begins at 7:00. And that's all that I have on my docket.
Tickets. Where can they get tickets?
Tickets. Ticket sales are, you can go online and still... Is there any football games left? Because that's where they were saying you can get them at the football games, the table. You can pick them up at the door as well.
Are you seeing all?
I have nothing this evening.
Okay. See is for Mr. Crescendo.
I don't have any reports or anything, but just a reminder that Tuesday is Election Day, and you need to vote. There are a number of common council seats open. And one thing you might not know, on the back of the ballot, you might not see it or remember it, but there's a ballot to vote for the Constitutional Convention. And I'm not telling you how to vote, but read it and make sure you know it's there, so make sure you do something with it. My wife's grandmother is 95 years old. She has not missed an election. When did they allow to vote? 1924 or something? She hasn't missed an election since then. So I'll be driving her, after she goes to the YMCA for silver sneakers at 95, to Circleville, and she's going to cast her vote, so you have no excuse. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Crescendo. Mrs. Knapp? Would you like to say a few words?
No. This weekend, we still have two football games at the stadium that are sections, right?
Yes.
Sections. We also have been doing soccer, so there's a lot of activity down there. Once again, many, many compliments to, from people from Long Island, from all around, that they feel like they're at a college campus. They're not at a high school, Trappist area. Then next weekend, we're done, and we're off. And then the next weekend, there's five games. So if anybody wants to see some football, or participate, or if they want to help concession stand, I'm okay with that, too. But there's a lot of activity, and if the weather stays like it was today, wouldn't that be nice? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Knapp. You do more than your share. For the people who don't know, Linda organizes and runs the Lynda Knapp concession stand. And it takes a lot of work to do that, because she not only is there when the games are on, but she also has to prepare and get the provisions in. So you do a good job. Mr. Gomez?
Thank you, President Perrino. This past Friday, the Presidential Park PTO hosted their movie night. And one thing I would like to say, that we have wonderful parent-teacher associations or organizations in our school district that go out of their way to raise funds to help our students, promote different honorable causes within our school district. The kids enjoy movie night at Presidential, and I know at Maple Hill the same. This coming Sunday, the Elks Lodge will be hosting their pancake breakfast. And the reason I mention it, it's my understanding that, again, the Junior Honor Society from Monhegan, as well as, I believe, maybe our other junior high school, Twin Towers, will be participating. So again, in support of our students and enjoying that wonderful food of the Elks Club, I encourage our community to come by Sunday morning, 7 to 1, and as students, do a great job in serving and meeting the different community guests and hosts. And I join also Mr. Crescendo in encouraging everybody to come out and vote. It brings me back memories of that image of Tiananmen Square in China back in 1989, of that student that stood in front of that tank, trying to send a message to the communist government that they wanted freedom. We're not facing any tanks here. We're not facing any such threats here. So in celebration of our freedoms, of our democracy, go out there and vote, and make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll also be, Mr. Gomez, the NJOTC cadets will be serving, and Maple Hill Honor Society, Elementary Honor Society, under the direction of Dana Guadaramas.
Yes. And I forgot to mention, of course, Mr. Perrino's an honorable and outstanding member of the Elks.
Yeah, there you go. Mrs. Tobiasin?
I have nothing to report this meeting, John. Thank you.
May I have your time?
No, I'm saving it for Pastor Williams.
Okay. Go ahead, Bishop Williams, your honor.
I'm going to be real short, so...
That's why I did it.
I'm going to be real short. But I just want to reinforce Mrs. Zuck's announcement about the Harlem Wizards basketball game. Again, it's Tuesday, the 7th. Doors open at 6 o'clock, and the game starts at 7:00 p.m. Come on out. Come on out. Yours Truly is going to be playing again this year, so come on out and watch, and hopefully I won't pull a hamstring. But come out. It's going to be a really, really fun night. Are tickets available? The tickets are available through different members of the Parents Club, but they're also available online, as Mrs. Zuck said. You can go onto the Harlem Wizards website itself, and you can purchase the tickets there. Tickets are also available down at Fusion Barber Shop downtown on, I think that's East Main Street, East Main Street Fusion Barber Shop. We have Mr. Freddie Williams, Fox Branch, who is actually our sponsor this year for our T-shirts, with our last sponsor no longer being in existence, but he has agreed and is sponsoring us this year. And so we're grateful to have a local designer, a local business member sponsoring us this year. So come on out. It's going to be a fun night. It's going to be a really good night. And I think it's going to be a lot of good times for the kids. Bring the little kids, bring the big kids, bring the older kids, bring those of you who want to be kids. So, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you, Bishop Williams. I'm going to, I have some things, but I'm going to depart for just a moment because there's a student in the audience, NJOTC cadet, who has achieved something quite wonderful. And that is an appointment to West Point. We're going to bring you over anyway. Come on up, Mike. Come on up here. Why don't you go to the mic? And, you know, we had planned to have Michael here at a later date, but I saw him in the audience, and he's a very hard worker. He's always at any community event that where help is needed. So, you want to say a couple things? I know that's, there's other service academies that are interested in you, correct? Go ahead. What would you like to say?
I don't have too much to say. I have a letter of assurance to West Point. That essentially means that as long as I get my stuff in, I can go to West Point, and I'm good to go.
That's great. Do you feel the preparation you're receiving at MHS, do you feel that's, has that been good for you?
Yes. I feel like it has helped me a lot, especially the ROTC. It's organized me a lot more than I would have been.
Good for you. Well, I'm sure we'll have you back when things are all finalized, okay? Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
I believe you're up to anything. Beast Barracks notwithstanding, right? Thank you for being here. Just continuing on a couple minutes. December 5, there is a referendum to sell Memorial School for $180,000. If you have any questions about where to vote, just give Taryn Clark a ring at 326-1196. And she will help you. Pretty much the same as the other elections, right, Taryn? Yeah, so if you vote in the school board election, you know where to vote. Continuing on a minute, Mr. Gomez talked about the Elks Pancake Breakfast, which proceeds, much of which is used for scholarships. In addition to football games this weekend and other sports events, there's a play at the high school on Friday and Saturday. You can't take it with you. So Jim Schofield always does a great job, a great job with the various events that he's in charge of. You know, we talked about the NJOTC. We had Cadet Jones come to the audience. This organization does so much, believe me. Examples. September 30, the cadets conducted a field training exercise at Maple Hill Park. October 15, the Fly Detail presented the colors at the Elks Lodge, and we're going to be awarding certificates at the next meeting. October 21, the cadets participated in orienteering championship at Tyler Estate Park. October 28, conducted a cleanup on their adopted street, Wisner Avenue. On December 5, they're scheduled to go to the World Trade Center. Many of our cadets have become officers in our services. Ensign Jessica Glickman, class of 17, is assigned to the USS Oscar Austin. She joined the ship in Hamburg, Germany, and just completed a visit to France. David Geir, 2012, was deployed with his Marine Reserve to Iraq. April Cabeline was, 2008, recently promoted to the rank of chief petty officer in the United States Navy. Most service people really don't make this, ever make the rank of chief, and she made it in three years earlier than normal. So on and on, and you saw Cadet Jones here tonight. So, you know, it's really a great credit to the district and what our program consists of here. Also, College and Career Center, there are about 130 people there for a college panel. Lisa Park always does a great job in sponsoring that. And I know... And I know Mrs. Tobiasin has a timer on me, so I have other information, but we're gonna stop right now there. And thank you for bearing with us on these, on this material. The next thing is our opportunity to address the board. And just as a reminder, we don't dialogue with individuals. Somebody will get back to you if you have concerns. And you have four minutes, and please keep your remarks to four minutes or less. Any takers in the audience? Please step up to the mic. Only once? Twice? Gone? Okay. Mrs. Clark, any letters? Okay, thank you.
Dear John, thank you for the kind words you shared in your letter regarding the Orange County Sheriff's Office and their participation in your Board of Education meeting to discuss our collaborated efforts to collect much-needed items for the people of Puerto Rico. We are always happy to hear good things about members of the Orange County Sheriff's Office and their interaction with the community, especially its young people. It is our duty and privilege to serve, and we thank you for taking the time to reach out to us and express your gratitude. We look forward to working with you again in the future, and if we can ever be of any other assistance to you, please do not hesitate to reach out to us, and we will do our best to accommodate your request. Sincerely, Chief Dennis Berry.
Mentioned. You have to come more often, help with the mic. As Mrs. Clark mentioned, this was in regard to the aid collected for Puerto Rico's Puerto Rican relief, and our district just did an outstanding job with that. There was a whole large trailer that went down to the sheriff's office. So, good job again. Let's see, personnel action items? We've had the personnel action items. No objection, we will approve personnel memorandums 10A, 10B, 10C, 10D. May I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Bishop Williams, Mrs. Knapp, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now, we have introduction of personnel this evening. Ms. Marconi, would you like to continue?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Perino. So, we have new staff members to welcome to the enlarged city school district of Middletown. And I'm gonna start with the Assistant Principal for Special Education, Nicole Tagney, to introduce one of our new special education teachers.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm introducing Samantha McCourt. She is gonna be joining the Middletown team at the Maple Hill Annex at Truman Moon Elementary School. She's gonna be teaching our primary classroom. Ms. McCourt comes to us with an undergraduate degree from SUNY Plattsburgh, receiving a Bachelor of Science in Childhood Education. She also has received a Master's Degree in Special Education from Grand Canyon University. And Samantha has experience working with students with disabilities in various settings. She's bringing with her toolbox of different strategies to help both academic and social behaviors, and we are thrilled to have her starting. And I personally am looking forward to a great school year with her.
Thank you very much. I've worked really hard over the last couple of years overcoming a lot of obstacles to get to this point, and I just want to thank everybody who helped me get there. And thank you, Ms. Marconi and Ms. Tagney, for giving me this opportunity, and I'm really excited to be part of the Middletown team. Thank you.
And next, I'd like to bring our Director of Athletics, David Coatsup, to introduce his new staff member.
Thank you, Ms. Marconi, President Perino, Bishop Williams, members of the board. It's my pleasure to introduce our new event coordinator. Last board meeting, we were able to, you were able to approve Kevin Gleason, and I'm looking forward to working with Kevin. He comes to us after a long intensive search over the course of, you know, we started after the approval from everyone here at the board to start the search last year, and then now we headed into the summer with many applicants and, you know, a long, like I said, intensive search to look for a highly qualified candidate to join our team. So, Kevin is, you know, his reputation in the sports community is tremendous. He's extremely well-respected amongst, you know, journalists. He's been an award-winning journalist in many areas throughout the state and nation. He's received many of those awards. He's covered every New York sports team that we have, except for, I think, the Buffalo Bills, but Kevin, we don't care about the Buffalo Bills down here. So, you know, it goes on and on with Kevin Gleason as far as, you know, his networking ability has kind of set him apart amongst our field of candidates. His ability to connect not only here locally, but across the state and even nationally, with what he was able to accomplish in his career at the Times Herald Record and the Record. He just did a tremendous job there as a sports editor recently. And, you know, we're extremely pleased, and I'm going to be pleased to be working with him in this next new adventure for us down at the stadium. Even tonight, we just came from a regional championship game. We have two more this evening, and Linda was right, it just goes on and on and on. Next weekend, we host the boys' state soccer championships for the whole entire state of New York. And the weekend after, we are hosting the East Semis for football. The whole entire eastern side of New York State comes to Middletown. So, we have just gained so much respect throughout the course of the whole entire state with what we've been able to attract and really maintain and sustain here in Middletown. And I truly believe, after going through this search to find our events coordinator, because it's, you know, our vision is strong and sound on what we want to do, and to really expand on that in the years to come, and Kevin is gonna be the one that's gonna be doing that for us. So, I'm pleased to hand over the keys to the stadium tonight to Kevin. So, here you go. Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you, David. And thank you to the entire Board of Education, Dr. Eastwood in absence, and I really appreciate the opportunity you've all given me. I can't wait to get started. I've been in sports journalism my entire professional life, come right out of Plattsburgh, much later than this young lady, or much earlier than this young lady here. But, so, it's all I've ever done, and I, really, a big part of me thought that's all I would ever do. And I found out about this position, saw the requirements, and I really thought it was made for me. I think it's kind of the perfect opportunity, and I can't wait to get started. I want to thank you all, and I'm ready to go. Thank you.
Kevin? Kevin, now that you have the keys to the stadium, make sure you get it back by 9:00.
That's right. Thank you. I will cherish them.
The downside, Kevin, is we're gonna miss reading your columns in the record.
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Perino. That is, it's a little bittersweet. 28 years at Times Herald Record in the sports department, including the past three as sports editor, and I think I did the sports writing thing a lot better than the editing thing, but I, I'm certainly gonna miss the writing, and I'm just gonna keep my hand in freelance writing, that kind of thing, because that never leaves your blood.
Great. You have a good team here, and Kevin Witt and yourself, I'm sure you can give us seminars on various topics in sports.
Well, yeah, and I'm sure Kevin has probably already told you that. He taught me everything I know, so I'm just hoping to properly pick up the mantle here. No, thank you. Seriously.
Thank you.
You might want to catch up with Anthony Williams, Mr. Anthony Williams. He's the dean of our House Five, too. He is, he was the leading basketball scorer, Plattsburgh.
Ah, okay. Very good.
So, I heard that connection, so you might want to catch him. He's the dean of House Five, so.
Sounds terrific.
Catch up with him. He's a good guy, too.
I absolutely will. And I was, I was telling David that we didn't have that on our calendar, the Harlem Wizards on Tuesday night, so we're gonna have to get a little publicity for that, maybe.
All right. Good. Hit me up.
Sure will.
We'll jump right on it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Best of luck. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Perino.
Dave, thank you. Now, we'll proceed to our action items. Let's see, approval of financial memorandum number 12. May I have a motion to approve that?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And for the people who have not been here, we have all this backup material on board docs for a good while. We can ask any member of the administration about these. I don't feel we're just going, we are just going through them, but there was a lot of study into this, too. Action item, motion to approve special service memorandum number nine is presented?
So moved.
Did you get that, Mrs. Clark? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Approving election inspectors. Motion to approve William Javier and Alice Jero as election inspectors for 2017, 2018 school year.
So moved.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Perino. You know what my favorite comment is going to be? I strive that this district will afford to having one common polling place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Tobiasin, for your comment. Do you have any suggestions where that could be?
Right now, I mean, this was off the top of my head. I would say that the way the election was held in May at the high school, to me, that would seem to be. I think the board would probably, the Board of Education office probably would be too small. I mean, I'm not, I didn't give it any thought, and I don't think I'm the one, you know, that should be asked that question. But I do think that, I know when I went, and Vince can, I think, support me there, many folks did not know where to go to vote. And if we could establish, and I know it's been established, but there's still a big question mark. I would just like to see, I think, even in the face of $8 savings, just have one polling place, and everyone knows where they have to go. I think the fear is that there would be too many people. I think last year, we didn't even have 900 folks, or just close to 900 people that voted. So, to me, it's doable, but I'm not the one in charge. So, it's just a recommendation, and I will still, you know, always bring it up, that I feel that it would be much more beneficial to have one common polling place.
I think we all appreciate you for bringing that up, Mrs. Tobiasin. Thank you. Now, we come to the second opportunity to address the board. Any takers? Oh, I'm sorry, didn't vote. Sorry, Mrs. Tobiasin. Okay. We have a first, we have a first and second on this. The discussion was held. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Well, we're not, unfortunately, we're not voting on the theory tonight. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Second opportunity to address the board. Once, twice? Gone? Thank you. We have an audit committee meeting. That's Mr. Crescendo's chair of that. Minutes of September 28, 2017 to approve. Motion to approve this?
Second.
Any discussion? Vince, do you have anything else? The September? Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now, we come to committee reports. Any committee reports? The committee report that I have, we had a safety and security meeting, and Mr. Scott runs a very efficient meeting. And Mr. Scott discussed the school building level safety committee report, which had to be submitted to the state. Also went over and reviewed the fire alarm, the requirements, eight is of December 1st, and most buildings are almost there. He gave us a district construction update. Construction projects are going very well. The tennis courts at the high school, people have asked about this. We cannot resurface them because the cold weather is supposedly coming, correct, Tom, on that? So, we'll hit that in the spring. We're planning to renovate the MHS swimming pool, so that's in the works also. So, there's a lot of things, there's a lot of things going on. We also had an audit committee meeting, October 26 audit committee meeting, in which the various claims were reviewed, and Mr. Tuttle is coming up with a plan to increase our reserve, our reserve commitment, various reserve committees. So, that's also in the works. And that's all the committees that I have to report on right now. And before we have a motion to adjourn, the next meeting, Thursday, November 16 at 6:30, there will be a public hearing for the December vote on Memorial School. Anything on roundtable new and compelling?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Perino.
Yes, ma'am. Motion to adjourn the meeting? You have something new and compelling, John? Mr. Tobiasin, was that a motion?
Providing that Pastor does not have something that's compelling.
I always have something compelling. But, no, it's okay. I'm only messing with you. It's fine.
Okay, we have a first, a second on that? Mr. C., second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Who do we have sitting in that front seat there? Right there. Are you, Mr. Gomez, Jr.? There you go.
Yeah, he is the.
Okay, we stand in adjournment. We'll see you November 16.
He's selling candy for the Monhegan trip to Philadelphia.
Anybody want to buy any candy? How much is a candy? $2? Let's see if I have $2. Oh, I don't. John, put that in for me. I'll get that on my wallet here. Okay, we stand in, we stand in adjournment. Okay, we stand in, we stand in adjournment. Thank you. Why don't you see if anybody wants to buy some candy? Thank you.
Stand by the table.